Okay, we will call our committee meeting in the hall to order. It's a committee meeting, so we typically don't salute, flag, and public comment and all that stuff. Now, the reason I wanted to call the meeting, County Executive and I have been talking, meeting, discussing for the first seven days, and really trying to come to an understanding of where we are with a lot of issues. And I felt, and I think Matt agrees, that this is a free Tuesday that we have that isn't bogged down with normal committee meetings. So maybe for the first month, two, three, I don't know how long we need to, we wanted to be able to meet. It's not a meeting to have resolutions on an agenda or to pass resolutions because it's just a committee meeting. But it's a chance for us to have a roundtable discussion over the issues and items that we need to get our feet moving on and going in the right direction. I have a few of those things listed here. We've had and exchanged some ideas that I think are great ideas. We've had a great opportunity to meet this week, and we want to share some of those things tonight. Again, it's not necessarily a meeting to conduct resolutions or anything like that. President Swanger was kind enough to come tonight. There's been a lot of questions over the last week about the county charter. And what does this section mean? And what authority is this? And what authority is that? Who has the right to do this and that? We've been, Matt and I have talked to Doug about issues. And I thought, and Matt thought, why not, what a better opportunity than to have the guy who commissioned the charter, who was chair of the commission, come and answer those questions. And in my short conversation with Dusty today, I said, whether or not I agree with what you say, I want to know what the intent of that charter commission was, and what the intent was that the people were voting on. And as I said, Dusty's the person to talk to. So any questions you have on the charter or the intent, and we're not holding you to anything, Dusty, we just wanted your vision, because you were there. You were at every meeting, you chaired every meeting, along with some other folks, and you know. So we're not quite there yet, but the first thing I wanted to discuss, legislator Kelly and I met today as the auditing committee. As you know, I hope you know, the charter spells out that the chairman of the board, the chairman of finance, and another member of this body serves as the auditing committee to audit the claims down in our auditing department. So we met with Ann today, and I don't know how you feel about this, and I just want to throw it out to you, and I think it's a good idea. Rather than to appoint, rather than to appoint a person from, as a third member, at least for the first year, I would love to see it rotate. So you all have the opportunity to experience what Martin and I did today. We had a great conversation with Ann. She enlightened us on a lot of things. And it also, you know, gives you the opportunity to see firsthand, so that next year, when you have a new chairman, and a new finance chairman, and a new member, you'll be able to already be well-versed on that. It doesn't mean that you can't come anyway, and we only really need two out of three to be there in order to do it, but we just think it's a good idea. If you don't think that's a good idea, and you want somebody to be permanently selected, in my absence, the deputy chair can be there anyway. And if there's scheduling conflicts or something, it seems to be that the morning works best for Ann, and it happens to be that it works best there because of the questions that we may have as you're going through and auditing the bills. But if you think you like the idea of rotating, I don't know, the charter doesn't really tell us that it's an appointment for me or a resolution from the board, so I think we can really just kind of...
The only thing I wanted to add that, I love this, I support it for a couple of different reasons. I was on the Board of Supervisors for a few years, and one of the best things that I learned was when we went through the budget line for line. And when you go through all the aspects of it, and you learn all of the aspects of the government process, and to sit in and go through the audit, and I was never on the auditing committee, but I did one time go in and sit there and watch it. Because when you're voting on something, you want to know what you're voting on. So I did do that. And I would love to participate in it, but I also like the security and the backup of sharing it with all of the other different legislators. So if Duke's on it, and he's not able to make it for some reason, I could help him out and do that for him, or vice versa. So in that way, all of us are participating in it, and all of us are learning that great aspect, because this is a lot of the money where the stewardess is. So I love it. Thank you.
In our conversation with Ann today, she's been there for 20 years, and she said that since they come up with a system of having the four supervisors previously, but now us, it's never worked better. The accountability's there, and she really is, she likes what we're doing. But I'm open for whatever you folks want to do. I don't think that you have to, like, next Tuesday at 8:30, we're going to be there. We have to be according to the charter. But I think that anybody that wants to come, come. Unless you want to set up some sort of a rotation or something. We don't have to make that decision tonight, but we did need to go down and get the auditing done for the week.
I'm just curious if we should consult, if this isn't the first item that we should consult Dusty about, as to what the intent was.
Well, the intent is pretty clear as far as who is on it. I think what's not clear is how is that person chosen, or was it just a, I don't...
Well, it's an appointment of legislature, so it's an appointment, it's an agreement among you folks to be that third person. It is your appointment as a legislative body.
I think it's pretty much whatever we want to do, right? I mean, as long as it's done by this legislature. We can't give our powers and duties up to someone else.
Correct. You can appoint whomever you choose from this body, but the charter says you need to appoint a third person.
Right.
It says you shall appoint a third person. I'm not sure you could rotate it and be obeying the charter.
Is there a timeframe on how long that person's appointed for, that third person? Does it say the year?
It doesn't say.
You could appoint month to month.
I think the year was assumed.
Maybe if you wanted to. And I don't want to complicate things. I'm just looking for input.
But I think Dusty very adequately just explained that. What he stated, and correct me if I'm wrong, he said we need to assign, so whether we're assigning myself, or Joe, or Alex, or Duke, we need to assign a third person. Is that correct?
But the time point, it doesn't say the length of time.
Okay.
So if you wanted to...
Rotate.
...appoint a person each month, you could.
We did.
I think you could do that. The assumption was a year.
But it should be a month.
You think that that was kind of, the intent was a year?
I think that was the assumption.
Yeah, okay. I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want to, I mean, personally, and I said something to Alex about it, with Alex's knowledge, and thought he was a great, great person to have do it. Of course, time constraints, work, whatever, I don't want to bottle anybody up. Ann seems to think that that thing during the morning works best. We can do it. We just need to, and again, the reason for the meeting tonight is to set a clear path on where we're going with some of these issues. Any more comments? I know two people that are going to be there. It's in the charter.
He's very interested.
Yeah, is there, does it sound like you want to change off and on? Is there somebody really interested that wants to commit every Tuesday?
Since there's no one else raising their hand, I would, I think that it's something I would like to know more about. If someone else decides they're more interested...
Nothing's stopping people from coming and sitting in.
There we go. Right.
I like the idea of rotating. I think it gives everybody an understanding of how things work, how things are supposed to work. I think if you just appoint one person, you could literally go your whole term and never understand how things work.
And maybe next year, you will just appoint one person.
Right.
But the first year, you're all getting a taste of it.
Or if it's a, I take it it's a weekly thing?
Yes.
Yeah, she seems to think it works best, otherwise you get stacked up, and you're going to get stacked up anyway in March.
Right. Because of the demand of going every single week, week in, week out, that would make rotating even easier for everybody, in my opinion.
What are our thoughts on doing, you know, each person take one month, and then we start, you know, let's say Terry does one month, so that's four, and then we move to Duke, and then Barb, and then right on down the line, and then we can start the rotation over.
Yeah, administratively, that sounds a lot easier.
If you want to take that a step further, you and I are there, District 1 and 2. Roy could be the first month, second month, third month, fourth, fifth, six, something like that, and then just, but again, it doesn't prevent anybody.
Well, we can go, you know, have it to where we can put it on the calendar for the monthly meeting.
Yeah.
And then if somebody's got a vacation or something, and they can't...
Swap it out.
But, you know, maybe they'll switch a month or something. But if we just put it on a normal rotation on the calendar for the monthly meeting, you know, and...
And Cheryl can remind us, I think through email.
That, and so we'll just, you know, maybe the summer months are better than the winter months for someone. You know, you have tax season, so, you know, and stuff like that, so.
All right. That sound like a plan?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Do you want to have it such that coming up at the January meeting, you have a resolution to appoint a person for the month of February?
Right.
You're not going to have a meeting to appoint somebody for January, but so probably the two of you can get to January, and then appoint, have a standing resolution for this year, where each month you appoint legislator X...
You could do that in one resolution.
...to serve it as the, for the following month.
Couldn't you, February, let's for instance say it was Roy, February, and then list March, April, or April, May, June, so I put it in one resolution.
Well, yeah, yeah, just to what Terry said, somebody might find that there's a...
I'm wondering if you should ask the person first, because they just might not be able to do it that month.
Right. I don't want to put anybody in an inconvenience.
You know, so, you know, Cheryl can give us a, you know, send an email out to ask, and then we can...
Each month, we do the resolution approving the abstracted claims for the auditor. We could always put that resolution appointing a legislator for that next month.
And leave it blank and just put the person's name in.
Doing it Monday, the night of the meeting.
Great idea. You take care of that?
Yes.
Is there anything stopping this legislature from picking the person for January right now, tonight?
Well, we can't really act tonight because it's a committee meeting.
Okay.
We can't have a resolution tonight.
But could we put the resolution, I haven't put the packets together for next Tuesday. Could we put a resolution out for next Tuesday?
It would be better because of the committee...
Right. And then resolutions go to Matt. Matt has the, I mean, for right now, if you know that that's kind of what we're going to do, if you know that whoever wants to be first, just join us next week, and there's nothing preventing you from sitting in a room with us.
You're responsible for copies, whoever it is.
Okay.
Look, the chair mentioned you can be there, and also you can request copies of anything that they've signed, if you want to review it.
Yeah, or review it with us, right there. Just review it right there. What we do in it is we're just signing it initially.
I don't know, with confidentiality, she said was a major issue.
Not for us. We're okay as a legislature. The confidentiality was for people...
But are we able to take it outside that office?
Oh, I don't know. You weren't saying that, were you?
No, I'm just saying that if a legislator was interested in what he signed for that day, they'd be able to know what it was.
Yeah, well, they can go down and review, they can go down and review the claims at any time. Any of us can go down and review. Like, for instance, what we signed today, you folks can go down and review anytime during a month what we've already signed, and you'll be voting on it each month to accept the audit.
And whatever the committee signs, it's in a report that goes to the finance committee, and then we add to it for the forward, so you're playing up with a list of the doctors that you...
So to your point, there's no confidentiality about public funds, it's open to anyone to do.
Well, the problem, Roy, that we ran into today, without getting into it all, but there's HIPAA. Things need to stay in that office. I guess, Matt, maybe you can explain it better than I, that Ann was explaining there's things to do with HIPAA, personal information, not so much the funding. Roy's right about the funding, but the personal information.
The issue was, Ann, we put our budget officer in that office, and the expression concerned was about some of the documents that she had in there. I don't think she was exactly referring to this process, but she was just concerned with some of the documents that she had in there, so we had to pull a switcheroo, and we took care of the problem. But that's where the HIPAA issue came up. But I don't think that really...
It does not do with public funds.
Yeah, exactly.
But just the documents leaving the room?
Yeah.
That's the issue she has.
She was definitely sensitive to keeping the documents secure in that office, which I quite think we can all understand, but I don't think at any time she wanted to not give access to us.
Right. No, that's fine. That was fine. Just making copies.
Just making sure it's a secure location for her, that's what she was concerned.
But I don't think she wants to have the copies, and then all of a sudden, and...
Outside of the room.
Yeah.
Right. No, I understand. All right. The next thing I had on this agenda was the charter. The one thing that we were talking about all week, that to us appeared to be ambiguous, to Dusty and some other members weren't, were in regards to contracts. We look at the powers and the duties of the executive, and it seems pretty clear what his duties are in regards to the contracts. If you read this, it says he has the, help me out, Doug, where are we at? Okay. "Be the chief budget officer of the county and be responsible for the preparation of the operating and capital budgets of the county in a manner provided by this charter and the administrative code to execute the same in accordance with the resolutions and appropriations made by the county." So the executive says, if a contract comes up and I sign it, I'm going to sign it, because I have the authority, because you appropriated the money. And then I said, well, wait a minute. You mean if you got a contract for $300,000 or something, you're just going to sign it without legislative approval? And maybe that's me thinking in the old school here. And then we got to reading it, and we looked at Section 15 that talks about execution of contracts, and it says, "All contracts entered into by the county shall be executed in the manner provided in this charter or as directed by the county legislature." So then I put legislator hat back on and said, well, see, Matt, you can't do that. So I'm thinking, why not call Dusty and see what the intent was? And he had a very great explanation that cleared it up. So take the floor there, Dusty.
We also have, we had quite a discussion about this. And where we are, we want the county executive to be able to move forward and to run the county. That's what he was hired by people to do. We also recognize the balance of power between the legislature and the executive office. You'll also note in the charter that you're responsible to develop an administrative code, both our policies regarding the operation of the county. So what we talked about was not tying your hands, but at the same time giving you some freedom, if you will, to set a threshold of, a financial threshold that allows the executive to move the county forward and take, and sign, but then there's some level where you want some legislative review to ensure that the county executive isn't funding all these big contracts to all of his friends. So, or her friends. So our discussion, in fact, we talked about putting a financial threshold in the charter when we were having the discussion, but then that really ties your hand, because the charter has to go out for public, and if you need to change the amount, it's a huge process to do that in the charter. So you need to have the legislature. So the discussion was, you need to see, the legislature will need to set a threshold of when you want to see a contract that for your review versus the executive just executes the contract in the form. Much like at college, where if it's a, I think it's $20,000 or less contract, I can move that forward. If it's more than that, it's got to be forwarded through the approval.
So looking at that, I then pulled out our procurement policy as it is now, and I don't, have you taken a look at that?
I've actually talked to Scott about, we have an updated year account policy for this year, where there'd be a process to do it.
Right. And that procurement policy, we were cited a few years ago, I think I was chairman in 2006 or '11, Cheryl, when we were cited by the Controller's Office because we weren't reviewing it each year, even if it didn't need any updating, it needed to be reviewed. So a resolution was passed saying that we would review it each year and make any necessary changes. That procurement policy gives a threshold of when you go out to bid, and it's actually the same policy, I think, in all municipalities, isn't it? The same threshold?
It dovetails to state law.
Right. Dovetails to state law. It's like, for, to go out to actual bid, it's, you know, $35,000, and then anything that just needed document, 2,000 to 4,000 documented verbal price quotes, 4,000 to 9,000 documented verbal price quotes by three vendors, and so on, and you can read through it in your time. In discussion with Matt, I said, if, at least now, until we come up with administrative code, we could come to a consensus. So originally, off the top, I'm thinking that $35,000 threshold looked pretty good to me. Matt had went out and actually did some research, I believe, with some county executives, got some ideas that ranged up to even $100,000.
Correct. Yeah. I'd be happy to speak on that if you'd like.
I don't know where you're at with it, to me. I was looking at $50,000 or...
Well, there's really, it runs, it runs the gamut from no threshold, which some counties have, you know, it's more smaller threshold depending. In counties where you have a very bitter relationship between the legislature and the executive, you see a smaller threshold. I spoke with Tony Percante in overnight kind today, who, he has a $50,000 threshold, and he says that works very well for them. Now, from my perspective, thinking about not only myself, but executives into the future, and in talking with Steve Aquario from NICEHAP, I could actually make the argument that if you're setting a threshold, you are diminishing the powers of the executive, which is only, can be done by the voters. That's the hardball rule. I don't want to go that route. I would like to come to an agreement, something where we think is reasonable, because as Tony said to me, it also provides meat cover, so then people don't feel like I'm giving contracts to all my buddies, which obviously everyone in this room knows that is not my intention here. But it also is that layer of protection for me, personally. In talking with Sean, another consideration here is, is we, government tends to always move slow, and a lot of times we're bogged down with an infinite number of resolutions and paperwork and this and that. The goal of this executive authority, I think, is, and that's what Dusty was leading to, is that we cut down a lot of that, so government can move and react faster. So I think, I would like to see a $100,000 threshold. If you would like to go lower than that, I'm willing, you know, to be, I'm open to your thoughts on that. I think $100,000 will get us, you know, that's probably, and this, this all came up today, so bear with us here, but maybe 80, 85% of our contracts, if we're at 50, maybe we're at 65 to 75% of our contracts. These are ballparks here. You know, so that's where I am. I don't want to pick a fight here. I want us to work together and come to an agreement. I understand that you also want to have, especially in the big, just ticket decisions, have a say, and I think you should have a say. I am a little, you know, in the big picture, I'm a little weary, because, you know, I think this, I respect this charter, and I want to make sure that I'm holding the powers and authorities of the executive office, which there's a clear case for. And that's why I'm dogging the county right now, does not have a threshold, because they have successfully made the case in court that, you know, that this would diminish the powers of the executive. Now, again, I don't want to go that route. I would like to come to some sort of agreement here between us, where we can both be on the same page, show that we're working together, we're, you know, we got the teamwork thing going. I must say, Tom has been fantastic as far as, you know, communicating on a lot of these issues. There's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and I think this is a heck of an opportunity for us to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on. But that's my two cents on the subject. I'd like to see it at 100. If 50 is more comfortable for you, you know, we'll work through that. It certainly won't cause us to think over it.
I told you today that I'm comfortable just having it planned in place, because I was really, you know, and I told Dusty today, and I think I said earlier, if Dusty came in here tonight and said the intent was to give the executive all the authority, all the authority, and you guys had nothing, if that was the intent, that was the intent. But it sounds like we heard what the intent was. We wanted to, it's not a decision that's got to be made tonight, but, you know, in thinking forward of creating that administrative code where those types of things happen. The one question I had, though, I thought about this after we spoke, and maybe it may be a better question for Sean, I'm going to throw a hypothetical out there. We have, to the executive's point, a budget was passed, we appropriated the money, okay? And it's in line item, whatever. That line item has, it's only one item that has $300,000 in it, say, or $100,000 in it, but there's four contracts within it that come out of it. What happens if one contract he agrees to empties that bank account? I know the answer. Well, he's going to have to come back to us for more money. Well, what happens when he has to come back to us for more money if we can't provide it for him, for whatever reason? That means we have three contracts that don't get, that normally would have been, you know where I'm coming from with that? Or doesn't it work? Maybe I'm wrong. Aren't there...
Actually, like I said, a longer term, for example, would be Mike's budget, because he does a, one of his lines is a very large amount of money, and there's, I bet you're probably 10 to 15 different contracts in that line. If it was a case, I would say it was a case where he would have to take it up with the executive if something was to go haywire with one of his contracts that totally blew that line or totally used the line up. That's part of the budget process when you do your budget, is you have an idea of what contracts your department has and what the estimated dollar amount was. Like, in the case where, like you're talking, I think it's, I think it's an internal problem within the department if that happens.
But ends up becoming our problem.
I believe that's a department, becomes a departmental problem that needs to be addressed between the department and the executive.
Right.
That's really...
But once it's emptied out...
Or budgeting is what will come out.
Right. And once it's emptied out, though, on a given year, then it does become the legislature's problem, because we would have to appropriate more money or try to find that money. I was just using it as a hypothetical.
Because I think, like I said, in your case, like I said, at any point, like I said, that's one thing the executive doesn't have, is the power to additional funding, put additional funding into budget. That's a legislative function.
One of the other things that Matt and I had talked to, and I think we agree on, because it isn't like we're trying to have the executive, isn't going to tell us when he's, hey, I got a contract, I'm not going to tell you. We're not, we're not looking at that. So Matt and I talked about what would happen if, prior to a contract being, you have negotiated it and it's over, he forwards those contracts, which they have to be anyway, to the clerk of the board, clerk of our legislature. We're all going to know what those contracts are and can come in and review those, and if we have questions, we're able, because you're going to do that ahead of time for us. Right? Is that where we were going with that?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So we could, we would have those contracts, we'd be able to see them, we'd have questions for them. Hopefully, we would do that before he signs them.
Exactly.
Because maybe there's something there that you...
Exactly. And frankly, I think as a show of faith into the fact that I want to work with this legislature, you know, I view myself as that glue between county operations and yourself, where if you need something, I'm here for you. You know, I fell off on some large contracts that have come across my desk today, out of respect for you guys and our discussion tonight. So I think, I'm trying, I know we're going to have to earn that trust over time, earn that respect over time. I don't expect it just to be given, but I hope that your body understands that we, you know, this is all in good faith. We're just trying to put structure and procedures in place that will help this process move forward.
And this doesn't relieve the county executive of the municipal law for thresholds for bidding for, you still got to go through the whole process for the $35,000.
This essentially says, if a contract... This essentially says, if a contract comes across my desk, and it's been reviewed by Doug, and it's over X amount of threshold, we'll then prepare that in a resolution similar to the way it's done in the board supervisors, and then, you know, we'll communicate that with the relevant committee chair, we'll go through the committee, go through the board, and then upon that approval, I will sign that contract. It just, you know, but now, if it's, you know, and you'd be surprised how many contracts, I joked with my wife last night, I said, I can't believe how often I'm signing my name. So, it's quite, and to have to do that resolution, not only frees the legislature up to work on other things, but it also frees up our department head to work on the good work that they need to do, rather than constantly spending hours and hours and hours doing resolutions over stuff that most of the time is just, okay, let's just do that. That's, I think, the crux of what we're getting at here.
If anybody's had a lot of experience Duke as mayor, because you kind of almost worked with this forum of government, I mean, what's your, if you don't mind?
Well, I actually don't support a threshold, because I think very clearly the intent of the new charter was a separation of executive and legislative authority. And everything that we say here, when it's, when we talk about a threshold or a dollar amount, in spite of the county executive's good intentions here, it really takes away from that division. And so, I would not, I would not be in favor of the threshold and whereby we involve ourselves in that regard. We need to let the executive be the executive. It just so happens that it's Matt this time, and it's nice that he wants to work with us like that, but I don't think that that's something that should be shared, I think that has to be, that's something that has to be divided.
No matter the amount?
Yes.
It could be a contract for...
That's what I said when I said there should be no threshold.
You're a county guy, I mean, what's your...
I'm an auditor.
You're an auditor, you got your attitude over there, I can see you got...
I'm talking $5,000 thresholds.
You like to see accounting.
If it's been proven in court that our establishing a threshold would violate the charter, then we can't establish a threshold, that's really what it boils down to. I have to look at the legal aspects of it too.
Maybe that's something we could have Doug get to, because, you know, this issue came up at maybe, what, 10:30, I was immediately on the phone, and I actually just talked to Ben Dublin, which is Joni's chief of staff out in Onondaga, and he was pretty adamant about there not being a threshold, as was Steve Aquario of NICE Act, so...
I think Steve was worried about the ambiguity. He was, he was looking at it as, you know, it says this here, and it says this here, you ought to strike that out.
Well, he feels, I talked to him at length today, and I'll see him tomorrow, I'll be with the County Executives Association tomorrow, as well as at the State of the State, but, you know, he was pretty firm as well, you know, and I certainly understand that side of it. Again, you know, tonight is a night to feel out where you guys are on that. Really, what I'm trying to say is that I'm willing to work with you on this issue. A part of me does really, there's some concern there about moving forward with, you know, diminishing the power of the executive as in the charter, and that's, that may be something we need to look into a little bit more, but, but again, in the show of good faith, in order to get off on the right foot, that's why, you know, I'm taking the position I am where, you know, if that makes the legislature feel more comfortable at this point, you know, I'll certainly, you know, work with you guys on that, because I don't want people to think that, you know, I'm just in this just to, you know, exercise power, for the sake of exercising power.
I get you. We also have talked about our committee process, the chairmanships, to what degree is their involvement? Matt has been very, as a matter of fact, I want him to know that I'm running the county, and that's the way I personally feel. He, that's what the people wanted, they wanted one boss. So, with that being said, what is the committee structure that we have in our rules of procedure? Do we change it? Do we leave it alone? So, we thought, we threw some ideas out there of how it might look and what we might do. We talked about a legislative form that we would create. Any department head that has a legislative request would request that in a form to the county executive to be copied to the committee chair. The committee chair is not over there trying to be a boss to the department head, he's the boss, but yet the committee chair is involved. The committee chair has a liaison, which is the county executive, and he can go to him with any of the questions or ideas that he may have for that department, and then Matt can be that liaison back. And we even went a step further and thought, well, what if once a month, the county exec, the department head, and the committee chair, I think you wanted to say Mondays, or...
Yeah.
Might actually get together, meet to talk about those issues, but, again, trying to get some footing to move a game plan forward. And resolutions, obviously, I and the committee chairs dictate what happens in here, and you're the boss out there, so if you want something and you need it from us, if Matt can't figure out how to get it to us, we've had this conversation, then shame on you.
Yeah.
You'll figure it out, if you need it, you'll figure it out.
I think there are other counties that use some really good forms to request legislation, so that the person requesting the legislation explains the intent of the legislation, perhaps they can explain the effect on existing legislation, they can describe the amount of money being requested, the impact on the budget, how it's going to affect the individuals, line items, et cetera. So, it can be fairly concise, but yet descriptive, and so, I think there's already a good, a good number of models out there, so that we don't have to discover these things for ourselves.
Duke, just if I can interrupt for a second. Rule 29, Article B, talks about the resolutions, and we've had it in place, and it's still, I just want to rip these off quick, because I think it's right to your point. The resolutions detail the statement of intent, the plans, goals, and objectives, the program description, the operational impact of services, the fiscal impact, cost resources, method of financing, intra-agency coordination if applicable, anticipated benefits, anticipated problems. We have that, I think that's almost everything that you just said, and in that form going to you, maybe that's what that form has on it, and then in turn ends up over to...
That's, when you brought that up today, we were copying my legislative action request form. My vision, what I envisioned for that was very similar to a sponsor's memo with any state piece of legislation. You have, you know, the short paragraph on what exactly bill does, the justification, the lengthy, you know, aspect of what exactly it means from a legislative perspective, then finally the fiscal implications. So, I think if, similar to what other legislators, Jesse said, that would be, you know, let's look at what the model is out there. I think we're looking at the same thing essentially and honing in on it, but if it's similar to a sponsor's memo, that will work for me. And I think also, it does, it can help communicate to you folks, because I know I'm going to be entrenched every single day, and a lot of this stuff's going to be second nature, but I want to do my best to make sure you guys have all the information or make me take the decision.
Duke, I'll cut you off, keep calling.
No, no, that's fine, that's exactly what I'm saying, I think this already exists, and we can, we can pick at something that will work.
And I guess I'm looking for the committee chairs, the legislators, did you have a different vision? Is there a different vision that you want, is there something you can add to it that makes it better, or is everybody kind of looking at that same path?
Can you give me an example on how this would work?
Let's just take...
Take his committee, and Paul. Paul's got a legislation that needs to...
Well, we have, you know, a couple pieces of legislation coming from Paul. One that whether or not it's going to go through, so I don't want it, you know, but it's one we're all familiar with, with the issue of the mail clerk. You know, whether or not we actually act on that, that's a whole nother story, but that's one issue that Fred brought up. You know, Paul would prepare, you know, the, or someone in the office legislative form, submit it to me, copy the legislator, that way you're aware of what's going on, you've got any questions, feel free to give me a call. You know, I'm not opposed to legislators getting involved on issues with department heads, however, I am cautious about department, one thing that I've heard from almost every department head is that, boy, does it feel good to have one boss. So, I want to make sure that they understand that, day to day, yes, I'm the boss, but they, it is also important either the legislature understands, you're making big decisions, financial decisions on appropriating funds, by all means, you want to get involved, absolutely. So, at that point, you know, if you have any questions, concerns, you know, then we could address them at that point, and then, you know, if you're okay with it, and Paul's okay with it, then we'd say, okay, let's move this, and then you would introduce that in committee, and take it through the process, you would take it from there. That, I mean, that's the way I envision it, and then obviously, if it hits the full board, if it passes, then I would sign.
Let's say that one of the committee chairs, let's use Terry again, Terry has a brainstorm, has nothing to do with money, has nothing to do with hiring, has nothing to, something about the department itself and how it's run. My thought is, Terry's going to come to you with that idea, because you're mayor of the department, because we do have that, we have jurisdiction over these departments, that's what our rules of procedures tell us. So, he comes to that brainstorming to you, and he gives it to you, and you may say, wow, thanks for your input, but I don't like it. Or vice versa, the department head may come to you with something, and you may say, Dusty.
I would say the commission was crystal clear on the intent of this, and that was that all staff report to the county executive, not the legislature.
But, what I'm asking Dusty is, as, what I'm trying to figure out and get through to these folks sitting on this side of the gate, is, we're committee chairs that have been appointed to committees and have jurisdiction. Somebody's, the Education and Governmental Committee is jurisdiction over FM, right?
No.
Or, no, that's not it.
I was...
Who's the committee of jurisdiction for?
Education.
Education?
Yeah.
Education and Governmental.
So, we bring the issues and that committee chooses.
Right, what I'm saying is, now that issue's going to come to him.
Right.
That's going to come to him, he's going to, that issue through that legislative form is going to get over to him. If he wants it to pass the FMCC budget, or whatever it is, he's going to have to get that resolution to him to get it to me, or to me to get it, whatever, to get it on there. That's what we're trying to think is...
It has to go to her, from him to her to committee.
Understand, but what I'm saying is, it isn't the committee chair diving into the department, is what I'm...
We are not to micromanage.
Right, and that's what I think Dusty's saying.
That's what I'm saying, it is, yes, correct.
And I do think though, I know that there are members of the legislature that are passionate about certain things, and I welcome, with respect to the charter, the ballots, with all that being considered, I am looking forward to working with certain folks on this legislature on some specific issues that you want to get close to. Now, we're going to do that within the structure that we have, but then, I think there's some concern, at least from what I've heard on the legislature, that that would exclude legislators from doing some good, the good work that they worked hard to get elected to do. It doesn't mean you can't do that, but we just have to follow the structure that we have now.
So, with all that being said, with all that being said, and we know that Matt's the boss, I threw this one at Doug yesterday, I tried to put you on the spot, but I said, if that's the way that it is, and that's the way we're going to do it, why aren't we just having committee of the whole meetings like this?
Thank you.
And forget about this whole, I know we had to do something to get it in place for the first month or two, but shouldn't we be working more towards, and I think you agreed with me, we get into this thing about committee chairs and...
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, we really, we really got to understand the model that we're working under here. And all of these, this whole thought process that we're trying to engage in with respect to scenarios that come up where committees have jurisdiction, as you put it, really is out of place, okay? We have a county executive who's going to be running day-to-day operations, and we are legislators. Your suggestion that we just meet as committee of the whole and do away with committees, I think is an excellent one, and I certainly would support that.
I'm just throwing it out there, because as it sounds, really, what's going to happen is, and I knew we needed, I know we needed to do something for this first month or two, but as it sounds, if it's going to go through Matt and come through, you know, legislator Kelly and I talked about it, finance committee, shouldn't it be all of us? I mean, shouldn't it be all of us, because we are all the ones, I don't know, I might be, you don't have to make a decision.
Yeah, my, I think, I think from my point of view, the only thing that I'm interested in establishing really is a good connection with regard to, to address the issues that perhaps cannot just be done legislatively alone, in the areas where we do need to work together. One of the items that I'm going to talk about this evening really had to do with the governor's assured services initiatives, as a for instance. And that's an area whereby we can, by working with the executive, we can, we can put proper legislation into place that would help establish that. So, we need to find ways to do that, as opposed to determining who's going to be in charge of what. I think that's already laid out for us. And so, again, I think the committee of the whole is a good idea, the notion that the executive comes to these meetings periodically, we get a chance to discuss with him openly some of these issues is healthy, and we can be off to a good start if we understand our roles. When I was mayor of the city of Napster, I probably biannually, I had to send out memos to legislators explaining to them that they were not to direct department heads, and then I would also send to direct to department heads that they were not to take direction from legislators.
You know, Duke, you raised a point, because when I said this to Matt, what would typically happen is, in an instance where a department head was looking for something, almost everything falls under finance, half of it falls under personnel. So, let's take, Duke is the chairman of human services, I'm going to pick on Mike. Mike wants to hypothetically, Mike wants to hire somebody. Well, he goes to Duke, and Duke says, man, I'm not, I'm not in for that, I don't think you need that person. Well, Mike will go shopping, and I'm not saying this, Mike, I'm just, Mike will go shopping over to the personnel committee chairman, because it falls there. If he doesn't get what he wants there through the executive, he'll go shopping to the finance committee till he finds a home. I mean, you department heads, you've been there, have you lived through this, isn't that what happens, what's happened in the past?
But, the whole idea here is that we're not trying to return to those sterling days of...
Exactly, and why my suggestion of, do we need these committees structured the way that we did the first day, and to continue on, and I think we all realize that that was just a starting point, trying to get off.
I was actually planning on suggesting that tonight, I'm glad you brought it up. I was hoping from the very beginning when this legislature was established, that, that throwback to the board of supervisors system of having these individual committees would go by the wayside and just meet as a committee of the whole. I think the reason they had individual committees with the board of supervisors, because you have 15 people with all different weighted votes, so to bring 15 people together and make sure you have a quorum every time, that's difficult, but I think with nine people, it'll just run much more efficiently.
I mean, you know, to have, to have, for instance, Matt meet with the department heads at his call, and, well, if we didn't have this, we wouldn't have to have the committee chairman, but to have the department heads and Matt come in to explain their resolutions that are coming to us prior to those resolutions happening on the fourth Tuesday, to me, the committee meeting of the whole is the place and the opportunity to be able to do that, for us to ask those questions.
And I think too, Matt, I think knows everyone here, knows what our skill sets are, and if he wants to consult with one of us on a particular piece of legislation, he's just going to...
We didn't know how receptive people would be to the idea of possibly not having a committee, so I tried to edge it in there. We talked about how, because we figured that people would still want to have all the committees and do the, go through the thing, so if we do that, how are we going to do it in a respectful, mindful way to keep everybody... Martin?
So, we're saying do away with committee structures, we're going to meet as a whole.
Maybe, you know...
Now, doesn't the charter list certain things, certain committees that do have to stand? They call for a budget and finance committee, they call for a name...
Well, that I don't believe is a standing committee. The charter calls for that committee, but when I'm, when I think standing committee, I'm thinking about what we've had in our rules of procedure.
But, they're saying that a committee has to exist, so...
Well, you and I talked about that, that budget and finance committee should be a whole, I mean, we, the auditing committee is going to exist... I mean, we, the auditing committee is going to exist, because it's in the charter.
The auditing committee's in here, where's the Budget Finance Committee? Maybe the Budget.
Come on, Tom, don't leave yet.
Out of you.
Doug had just reminded me that with this process, Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, typically in any course of a given year, we see 400 resolutions, maybe more?
The Board of Supervisors.
The Board of Supervisors would see 400 resolutions. Depending what we do with contracts, depending what we do, I mean, we're looking at far less, I don't want to say half, but we're looking at far less resolutions, because our job here is to legislate, not legislate.
Frankly, the department head's job is more so to do, to run their department, rather than spend all this time writing resolutions. You know, I hate to say it that way, but that's the truth. We're spending a lot of time doing these resolutions now.
Going back to the auditing committee, what does that consist of? The chairman of the Finance Committee, the chairman of the Legislature.
That's true.
And, and then in 7.4, it names a Fiscal Services Committee.
I don't think it means we don't have to have committees. I don't think that we're, at least what I'm suggesting, like, the Finance Committee, I think, should still exist, because we have finance, but it could be a committee of the whole, could be the Finance Committee, and there could be a chairman of that Finance Committee, which we have, and you would still be on the auditing committee. I'm just going to throw out there...
Just to keep the nature of this document, you know, whole, as it was voted on by the constituents.
Right.
You know, there are certain committees in here that, that it names. Whether it's establishing those committees or not, they are named in there.
Doug?
Yeah.
I think Alex had the...
The Capital Projects Committee is, is, while it certainly is, is stated in the charter that it exists, it's not a true committee of the legislature, because it's chaired by the county executive, the county treasurer is a member of it, and some other department heads are a member of it as well. So it, it's a committee, but it's, it's not a committee of the legislature.
But the auditing committee.
The auditing committee is.
Right.
Oh, yeah, the auditing committee.
There are committees in there that are...
Right. Well, again, I think we have some homework to do on that. I don't think that you can just do away with our committees overnight, but I'm just throwing out there, is it a possibility that we can alleviate ourselves of this as time goes on, because we have the ability to change our rules of procedure? You could have liaisons. So you could have, you could have a legislator that's a liaison to a committee, but not necessarily a committee. You could have a liaison to FMCC like we always have. You could have liaisons to the Treasurer's Office or the Economic Development. I see him, Barb, okay, keep going.
And Doug, to mention where I was getting at, Physical Service Committee, it's in 7.4, Section C. If you have the red line, either it's on 7.4.
Yeah, I was looking at the Capital Projects Committee.
Again, tonight's meeting isn't, isn't to make all these decisions, it's to throw these ideas out there and get a clear pathway of what we want to try to accomplish. I saw Joe and Barbara, and I don't know who went first, so...
Okay. One of the things I just wanted to recognize, while I closed...
Because it was Barbara.
So I don't forget, while there's been times as a Board of Supervisor, I've been able to talk to, reach out and talk to department heads, which has been so vital, to be able to do my job correctly, because we didn't have someone who was one person running it. And you needed to know what the, the leader of that department head did. So if there are times that Matt, who's doing many different things, and I'm with respect, if there was times I needed to talk to either Paul, or Ken, or Dusty, in cooperation, if there were times, I think that I would still be able to, I hope, but not in an intrusive way.